March 4, 2021 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. I think United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, united in this law. With liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Snow?
Excused.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Sisarol?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, February 11, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have six public hearings, and we will follow this format. First, the applicants will be given an opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so. Or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that in mind, we have a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at 8200 Norton Parkway. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Steve Passoff, 341 East Edinburgh, Highland Heights, Ohio.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
Sure. So we are in contract to purchase what was the former NOAA's event center and are moving forward as to kind of reworking that project to allow for the event space and the like. And we were looking to reinstitute the conditional use permit to allow the exterior outside patio and the surrounding lawn area for the dining and drinking area, including offering live music and the like.
Okay, thank you. Anything from administration?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that at the city council's meeting on Tuesday, they did consider the recommendation of the planning commission to amend the development plan for 8200 Parkway, Norton Parkway, I'm sorry. And they did approve that amendment. So it is, it was passed.
Anything from the commissioners?
I just, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I just heard one thing in the, in the presentation that the gentleman just made. Up until now, this has just been saying the patio. He mentioned that there was a lawn. Could you speak to how you would put people on the lawn?
Yeah, at this point, we're really more talking about the existing patio, but it would be the intent and the eventuality to maybe utilize as a pond area and offering a little bit more venue space for a bridal party slash ceremony in that space. So maybe putting some chairs and when and if that would be, we'd obviously come to planning with our final plans of what we'd like to do.
Okay, so this wouldn't be the general public. This would be specific to reservations for events?
Yeah, so right now, that is the intent. What we'd like to do is, if you're familiar with the property, they've got a patio six, I think it's almost six feet high of brick area. So eventually, we'd like to have better sightlines from within the venue space and really utilizing the beautiful pond setting.
Okay.
Thank you, anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions?
Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Conditional use permit to allow an adult daycare at 8901 Mennor Avenue. Please state your name and address clearly for the clerk, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Lenny Chazewelli. Our address is 41... I'm sorry, my brain just left me there. 4145. Powell Road, Powell, Ohio, 43085.
Thank you. Will you tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do?
Yeah, basically, it's just a, an interior renovation project for a, an adult education center. Basically, what we're going to be doing is renovating the kitchen and just upgrading some of the items that are in there to better utilize the space.
Is that it?
That's it.
Ms. Mitchell, is there anything from the administration?
I'd just like to expand on the actual relationship with Viquest with the, it's the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities. It's a program that works exclusively through that agency. And they have many other locations throughout Ohio if the applicant wanted to speak to that. There's actually one on Mennor Avenue, but in Paintsville Township, right on our border. That's been in existence for 10 years. We've had extensive conversations with this applicant regarding this location, as well as the other location with our chief building official, Jim Decker, to clarify the actual proper use code with regard to the building code. And we are comfortable with the, the use category and how the, the space will function and be utilized.
Thank you. Anything from the commissioners? Mr. Varga?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. You said you were going to be changing the kitchen. And on the plans that you provide to us, it says break room. Which would suggest that's for the staff. What kind of, you're open from 9 till 2 for these individuals. How do you provide a food service to these folks?
There actually is no food service per se that's provided. The kitchen break room area is, is actually going to be more so a, a training kitchen and an area where if the occupants are not engaged in computer training or exercise or one of the other activities, they're, it's just a place for them to go and relax.
So, so they're there from 9 o'clock until 2 o'clock, but they don't get any lunch?
No, not necessarily. I believe Drew from Viquest may be on the line. There's a, there's a little bit more to, to the services. They're not necessarily there from the, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 o'clock. There's multiple people will be going out on outings. Some people may come in for some computer training and then, and then leave for an excursion and then come back. So it's, it's, they're not necessarily in the, in the facility for that, that extended period of time.
Is Drew on?
I don't know if Drew is on or not.
See anyone by that name on the list? There is a call-in user, but no one by the name of Drew.
What about Tony Britt?
Tony Britt is there. I mean, I'm unmuting Tony Britt now.
Thank you very much. Hello, hello, everyone. Yeah, this is Tony Britt on. We have 16 other day and employment service programs across the state for, we service individuals with disabilities. And yeah, they, they have, our, our mission and our goal and our purpose is to, for the individuals to, you know, live their best life, to gain independence, to learn vocational skills, to learn social skills, to learn life skills. So we do that each day by doing vocational training classes. We will do like computer classes, arts and crafts. Individuals will engage their community by volunteering, by visiting different, having different experiences in the community. And everybody, it's a person-centered program where every individual is at a different place on their journey in life. And so there are times that we do, you know, they, they will eat lunch at the program. They may eat lunch outside of the program. So yeah, there, there are, there are times during the day that they do get to eat lunch, you know, in that program, so as well.
Yes, my concern was only how deliveries were made, when they would come, when they would be made, if it's a food service or pre-made dinners or lunches, they, that, you know, would they be delivered by truck and where the trucks would be? And that was kind of my concern.
Yes, sir, there's no food service. It's just, they would bring their own lunch when they come to the program. So we wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a food service provided in that sense, no.
True. All right, thank you. Thank you. Anything else from the commissioners? Is there anybody online that would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, no one has indicated they would like to speak for or against this proposal in the Q and A. I would remind everyone out there, if you want to speak for or against an item, please indicate so in the Q and A.
Thank you. Okay, this public hearing is closed. I'll I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it to proposed conditions.
I'll second, three conditions, right, Charles?
Three, sorry.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We jumped forward a little too quick on the first item, the conditional use permit on outside dining or drinking at condition, at 82 Norton Parkway. I didn't ask if anybody was here to speak in favor or against, Larry. Is there anybody online for that one?
Once again, Mr. Chairman, no one indicated they wanted to speak for or against the request in the Q and A.
Okay, thank you. So item one, also, that public hearing is closed. Item number three, a conditional use permit to allow an adult daycare at 7770 Mennor Avenue. It's the same applicant. That's the last one. Do you want to expand on anything that you said?
The program is actually very similar. This is a little bit more of an extensive remodel as it was a bank building with some minor exterior modifications. The current overhead drive-through for the bank will be a pickup drop-off area. And the overhang will be slightly shortened to allow the van's clearance. But the, the use of the facility is identical.
Thank you. Anything from the commissioners? Anybody online speaking in favor or against?
Once again, Mr. Chairman, no one has indicated they are in favor or against it.
Okay, this public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Mitchell?
I'm sorry, if we could just maybe add one, one more condition, just to acknowledge for the record that the existing drive-through canopy will be modified with this proposal. That was a statement made in the, in the analysis section of the report. It's actually on page two, the second paragraph. The existing drive-through canopy will be reduced by six feet to allow for van access and will be used as a drop-off area. We could add that as a condition, just for purposes of acknowledging that change in sight.
Okay. Let on, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion with the three conditions.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
This hearing is closed. Number four, conditional use permit to allow veterinarian clinic has a similar use at 9200 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
I am trying to find that applicant.
Looks like he's here, Ryan Sexton?
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Ryan, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so basically, we just put in a small, quick-service veterinary clinic. We've got them in Myers, all around the Midwest. More closely, we have Rossford, Huber Heights, for two that we've just completed. Basically, we, we separate the back of the store, so there's no pets coming through the store. We put, we put in a small entry door at the front. Provide just simple low-cost vaccinations, well checks, things of those nature. Do not do boarding, grooming, surgeries, overnight stays, et cetera. Pretty, you know, we work in conjunction with the Myers to allow people to fill their prescriptions for their pet meds within the Myers store. Just kind of neat, not, pretty neat accessory use we do. And then for anything major, we work with local vets to, for any major surgeries, things like that, to, for referral system.
Thank you. Is there anybody online willing, wanting to speak in favor or against, Larry?
I did not see anyone.
Thank you. Anything from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tiedemann?
Just a quick question. You guys are going to put a door in from the outside to this? Are you making any other exterior changes to the building?
Nothing beyond signage.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I didn't check today, but some of that area behind those columns are usually places where, where the shopping carts are lined up on both sides of the doors or the entry area is, are you, obviously, you won't be storing them. Will that be an issue or what would you do with the additional cart storage?
We'll work with the store to manage where those go, so they can move them to the other side. They, they end up with an overflow cart area sometime, but it's not a designated cart area in front of where our door goes.
Well, I mean, we would want you not to have carts in front of the door, obviously. It's an exit.
Yeah, obviously, we don't want, it's an entrance, too, so we can't get any customers in if we don't have doors.
I understand. Well, okay, as long as that's maintained that way, that's fine.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? This public hearing is closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it to conditions.
Julia, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have a conditional use permit to allow for a vehicle service facility Jiffy Lube at 9595 Diamond Center Drive. Will the applicant please state their name and their address for the record, please?
Matthew Pisco, 37740, Hills Tech Drive, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Could you repeat your last name one more time?
Pisco, P as in Paul, I as in K O.
Hey, thank you. Will you tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
We're, we're proposing a 3,064 square foot Jiffy Lube multi-care facility with four bays, hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM in an existing out parcel between Dairy Queen and Home Depot. No future cuts, access from Diamond Center Drive, and we'll circulate using Home Depot and the shared Dairy Queen.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that wants to speak in favor or against, Larry?
I did not see anyone online.
Thank you. This public hearing is closed. Is there anything from the administration?
No, nothing specific to the use, no.
Okay. Anything from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
My only concern is the, from the east elevation, and that would be from the east, approaching it from the road, the two roads on the east of the building, that the, the rooftop mechanical unit would be visible from the east. I think, unless there's an argument that says it's not.
We'll address that in a later item. This is just
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
This is just a conditional use.
Agreed.
Agreed. Is there anything else from the commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on the conditional use permit with the four conditions.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
We have a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility get-go at 6800 Center Street. Will the applicant please state their name and address for the clerk?
Pat? I'm not sure who wants to speak on it.
Yeah, this is Chuck Stewart and Joe Tison. I'm just listening, and this is Pat Avolia with Giant Eagle. Are either of those on the line?
Yes, they are. Just unmuted both of them.
Okay.
All right, yeah, my name is Chuck Stewart. I'm with Giant Eagle, address 101 Kappa Drive, Pittsburgh, PA. We are proposing a convenience store and fueling station with drive-through at this location. It's a new model that we are using to assist in allowing more contactless service to the customers.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody online that wants to speak in favor or against?
No one has indicated they wanted to speak either way in the Q and A.
Thank you. This public hearing is closed. Is there anything from administration?
Nothing on the proposed use, other than the conditions listed in the staff report.
Is there anything from the commissioners? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on the conditional use permit with two conditions.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Full business. I'll entertain a motion to remove number seven, a conditional use permit to allow for modifications to the required buffer adjacent to the R2 and R4 single-family residential district at 7272 Atkins Road. Can I get a motion to remove it from the table? So moved.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisarol?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Is that applicant here? Could you explain a little bit about what you want to do?
Yeah, hey, my name is Pastor Steve Sindelar. I think you guys are familiar with this. We've been kind of tabled here for a while. And so we are obviously have woods to the west side of the project and then a large open field to the east side. We've added, added more trees and rails and those sort of things on the east side. So I think it's pretty clear-cut. The only thing I see, recommended list of proposed conditions, I'd just like to push back, if I may, on the wood fence, on the vinyl fence instead of a wood fence. Just with the amount of trees on the west side, I'm concerned that would be a lot harder, actually, to maintain vinyl if they, if they break and match those colors versus just being able to stain wood. So I'd like to keep that wood material. And obviously, we stain it when we need to, so.
Thank you. Is there anything from the administration?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have John McFarland here, our landscape architect and planner. And he's been working extensively on this project. He's been out to the site. And if, if you don't mind, I'd like him to just kind of talk about the changes they've, they've proposed and what we basically put in the staff recommendations for both, well, for, for the buffer.
Thank you. They, they have two sides. They have, of course, the west side that they're asking for a buffer, which is the ones adjacent to the Kittery Cove residential development, along with the eastern side, which is adjacent to the large open field, which is owned by the Paintsville Church proper owner. Going to the west side, where they're speaking of the fencing, the proposal that they're showing now is the same proposal that they had given back in the fall. So there is no change in regards to additional plant material, fencing, or that matter. We had made the recommendation prior for it to be a vinyl fence for the maintenance reasons, so that it keeps consistent. It could be a tone. That would be more of a neutral color as opposed to a white fence. Just a lower maintenance situation. The part that was of the big concern was the eastern side. They're asking for a reduction on that side. Came back with a secondary submission, which you see before you. They've included more plant material between themselves and the adjacent property. Still not maintaining what the buffer requirements are in regards to our code of ordinance, but it is more substantial with material. They did provide a couple smaller mounds. The mounds that they're illustrating are very low, two-footers, which really aren't mounds. We had asked previously to try to work a little bit more with the grade there. I realize that there is some drainage that runs through there that flows into the detention basin. But I think that with a little bit of work, they could probably increase that bounding a little bit to help enhance the height for screening through there. They have provided some taller grasses, some ornamental shrubs and such. I think that they're a little, they, they use a lot of the same material. We could probably mix in some perennials, some color, some variations. That would be very simple, that they could directly work with B to make it a little more aesthetic, maybe a little more pleasing and eye-drawing as opposed to being able to see through. They're going to be more drawn to just the immediate landscaping there. It's better, I think, that we can work together to and I think it would be very improving along that side. If ever the basin property to the east is to be developed, they'll be required to do a buffer also, because again, it is, if it's a church use, it'll still be a residential to a residential situation. So they'll be required to have a little bit of buffer, too. Between the two, I think the future holds a pretty nice buffer between the two.
Thank you. So this is for the applicant. Are you willing to work with John and, and put this to bed and come up with a solution here?
I, I think we have been. I hope you can see that. I mean, I, you know, we can add another foot or two to the mounds. I mean, if we're really talking about those kind of things. I mean, you know, I think, I think the trees on, on the east side, you know, and those landscapings, it fills it in without making it a jungle where we can't, can't maintain it. You know, there's the other, the other side of this, is it's almost 700 linear feet. You know, we, we do want to maintain and make it look nice, not just one year, but, you know, in 10, 10 years. So, you know, I, I, I can trust his intuition on those things, certainly. But we want to get ourselves, not get ourselves into a corner where we can't maintain things either, you know, so. But yeah, yeah, we're, I think we've proven, I hope we've proven, that we're willing to work with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I have a question for the, for the city. They have on their, their plans the, the outline of what might be a future addition. If, in fact, they would come back before us with the review of that addition, we would have the opportunity to review the, this subject again, wouldn't we?
Certainly, if they, if we didn't feel that, that it was being appropriately addressed.
Right, but I mean, even for the new structure, if they had an addition, but also, we could review in general the level in which they've maintained this or the success of what they've done.
Yes.
Not that it's, it's, it's not guaranteed that they're going to come back with an addition, but that would be an opportunity to review this again in the future. Right?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
And, and if I could just add, Mr. Chairman, we, if, if they feel strongly about the, the wood fence versus vinyl, that's certainly at your discretion. We just thought, from again, from a maintenance standpoint, as Mr. McFarland indicated, that that was easier way to go.
Mr. Chairman? Question for administration. I noticed that there's no irrigation plan indicated. And we're putting this whole effort on landscaping. Is there a reason we're not requiring that?
It will be required. They still have to submit for building permit.
Okay.
And it'll be submitted at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. We've got to change condition one if we're okay with the wood. The wood fence. I guess we'll remove condition one. I just want to make sure it's known that that wood fence needs to be maintained annually or however often. Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, if maybe not remove that item, but because the colors are still there and if we can still stress that we would like to keep it an earth tone and sometimes times they're painted.
Yeah, all purpose. All proposed buffering fencing shall be constructed of wood. The colors shall be earth tone in keeping.
So if we just take out of low maintenance vinyl and we will.
Yeah.
We just say constructed of wood and keep everything else. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll make the motion with that adjustment to the first condition. So five conditions.
Second.
Julie, please.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Architecture review of a church at 7272 Atkins Road. And that applicant is still on the line? Please tell us a little bit about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, hold on one second. Can I entertain a motion to remove number eight, an architectural review of a church at 7272 Atkins Road from the table?
So moved.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Okay, now you can tell us a little bit about the church. Is that applicant still here?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I did a talk while it was muted thing. I appreciate your time. I won't take any more of it. You're familiar with the project, but thank you for your for your service to our community.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cicero.
I just want to know how we're solving the lighting issue of the headlights with the people across the street.
Yeah, so we have sent a letter to the two two addresses right directly across indicated on the site plan. I don't have those numbers in front of me. I received feedback from one of the two that they were interested in us providing headlight mitigation, you know, essentially using some mounting and evergreens. And Mrs. Mitchell is aware of that correspondence and has that in her records.
And you'll do the same for the other?
If we hear back from them.
If you hear back, sir.
Yeah, I mean, it's all right. He, the one that we have not heard back from already does have a significant mound with, with large mature evergreens already. We propose, I told him that we could extend that a little bit to kind of fill in, but I haven't heard back from him.
Okay.
We would certainly keep that on the table.
Thank you. Mr. Varga.
Mr. Chairman. This isn't really a requirement or a criticism. It's just an observation that you might want to consider. Okay? When you look at the north elevation, the area, you have this large entry area on the left. And then the next section of massing is ephesus. It has a metal roof and ephesus down below, and there's a small window. When you look at the opposite elevation, which is the south elevation, you have that same area spaced next to the entrance area is now on the right, and the next mass next to that, you have veneer brick up against the entry, which I think looks better because it separates it from the rest of the building better. I guess what I'm suggesting is that you, that it become consistent, that you have brick on both sides.
Okay, yeah.
Understood?
Yes, sir. I'll refer that to the architect. I can't remember if that's because of the future phase or or if that is the
Yeah, I don't think it's the future.
Yeah, I don't think it's. I don't think it is. I think we actually, we were supposed to make that change. I asked for that. I do know what you're talking about. I think, yeah, I just think that's not growing.
It would just, I think that the north elevation would just look better if that was brick up against your entry element.
Larry, would you unmute Mr. Jack Barry?
Yeah.
Mr. Barry, you're unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. I think the reason why in the north elevation, we had ephesus next to the main entrance was because we already had brick over to the right side of that. And to continue the brick over to the main entrance, we tried to break it up, give it more of a residential scale by doing that. Where on the other side, the entire massing to the left was ephesus already, and we wanted to put some brick there. So we have two different conditions on the north and the south. And because the north was facing the road, most of it was brick. We created that little element, that link out of ephesus between the two, and that just seemed to go to go better scale-wise.
All right. I'm not requiring, I mean, I'm not suggesting it to be a condition. I just thought it'd be more consistent if you handled your entry element on the north and south sides in a similar fashion, but that's, if you don't want to do that, you don't need to do it.
Is there anything else from the commissioners? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion with one condition.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich. Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Number nine, we have a preliminary site plan of a convenience store and gas station get-go at 6800 Center Street. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
This is Chuck Stewart with Giant Eagle, address 101 Kappa Drive, Pittsburgh, PA.
Now we're into the site plan. Will you tell us a little bit about the site plan?
Yes. As you can see in the site plan, this is our model that we have going out for a drive-through facility for our get-go. As I stated before, the intent of this facility is to allow for contactless delivery of food and items from the convenience store and not having to have the customers actually go in the store with COVID and the pandemic going on.
And this is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm good. You're good.
And this is, this is the first of its kind for Giant Eagle?
Yes.
What happened to all the brick?
That was a design change. Like I said, this is a new model. So kind of looking at a different, looking at a different way of trying to design the building from an architectural standpoint as well. So it was more of a new, it's a new design for this type of store. And this is since it's first of our kinds, it's kind of our first go-around in the process of going through an approval process with this type of building.
Okay. I mean, there's a lot of brick around there and, you know, in manner, we try to keep, try to keep the buildings as much brick as possible. So, you know, I'm definitely a one for trending back towards the initial design rather than trending away. I don't know what my other commissioners think about that, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Yeah, the basis of our approval of the last facility was that there was a significant amount of brick on the building. And also, I believe the piers that supported the the canopy were also shielded in brick. And the brick was to match the existing, the building that was the store, the larger building that was built that, that's already built. So I think this is preliminary, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So I think, I think you need to listen to that feedback.
Yep.
We are looking for, I realize this is probably a prototype design. So this is also going to be your first adaptation of the, of the prototype, which is that we would like to see brick on it. The other thing that I would want to bring up right away, just so that there's no confusion, is that if you look at the rear elevation, which would be the north elevation on the site, we have a rule here about the mechanical equipment being, being shielded. And the north view is certainly a public view from, from further down. And those, those pieces of equipment, even though there is a small piece of shielding, some kind of screen, it would have to be, it would have to be considerably higher to take care of that mechanical equipment, and that would be a requirement for us. I don't know how you're going to achieve it. I'm just pointing out that that, that condition, as it's shown both from the view, that equipment would be viewed from the east and from the north. And because we're treating this as a campus, we're treating all elevations of the building as designed elevations. So, so that would be an issue that would have to be dealt with relative to your design, that shield the mechanical equipment from sight.
And all those considerations that you bring up and that are also in the staff report will be evaluated going forward as we move towards the next phase of the plan, so.
Okay.
Is there any questions on the, anybody have any comments on the site plan portion of it?
Didn't we address the site plan or anything? No, that was just.
And this is just the what you guys like to do in architecture. That actually.
You know, if I can, unless someone else would like to speak first. I don't want to cut anyone off. We had some issues with the site plan originally. I think a number of us did. And we still have the left-in, no, I guess it's a right-in.
Right.
From, from Center Street as a, as a car entrance. And then we have the right-in also from the, from the driveway, the east-west driveway, which I know is necessary for your gas truck to come in. That's going to have to be seriously signed so that we don't have people trying to leave, exit out those. I still feel a certain level of discomfort about those. Because it's a campus, the one coming off of the, on the southern side, I still have an issue why people can't just come around and enter it if they have the ability to enter from the side, from Center Street. Why we need this other entrance off the, the east-west driveway on the south side? You can speak to it, but I still have some sensitivity to that. It's kind of interesting. We have, you have this big drive-around in the back. I'm not sure what the purpose of that is. It's, it's quite wide. The, the drive-through, that's a condition where once you've gotten into there, you can't get out. I mean, there's no way, not that, it's an observation. It's not necessarily criticism. But you have, once you drive into that, you're locked into that until you come out the other side. You might want to just speak to that, you know. Is there another way? I guess, I guess it's painted on the left, on the east side. That's a painted line, and I guess people could bail out at that point.
Yes.
Could you also speak to the limitation on the size of the vehicle that can go through there? Because that, some of that's pretty tight. I think it's only 12 feet wide at the exit, and I'm not sure about your overhead condition. So how, how would you keep vehicles out of there that wouldn't, that don't fit?
If you look right, if you look at right where the painting on the, right there, there's a clearance bar that'll be placed there to allow, to make sure that, you know, any overheight vehicles will not be able to access through there. Our turning analysis showed that a passenger car pickup truck can maneuver through there through the drive-through. In speaking to the, yeah, you see right there, there's a call for the clearance bar. In speaking to the right-ins coming off of the state route there and center, that's for people to come into the, directly off the road into the site. There are going to be two do not enter signs in that location. That's a longer throat coming off the roadway there. If somebody tries to make a right to go out that way, they're going to have a very difficult time trying to turn around to make a right onto Center Street there. That throat, that's why there's a little bit more of an expanded throat. They're going to have a little bit more difficult time at that angle to go back onto Center Street. The right-in coming down further right there, making, that's for anyone, if they're making a left coming off of Center Street, not a right, they can turn right into the gas station. They don't have to go around. If they're just looking to get gas, they can just pull in right there to get gas without having to go up towards the convenience store. They are able to just go in, get their gas, and then they'll be able to exit out without having to get closer to the building and increase traffic in that area. It's just an easier access to get to the gas.
Mr. Varga.
I guess my observation is that it would work just as well without the entrance on Center Street. They would just turn at the corner and turn in to the one entrance. I don't know why that would be. I just question it because I just know how things are.
I have the same question, and we, we had this issue the last time. If someone comes in off-center, they take that sweeping right turn in, they're going to drive over the top of the stop sign and your painted markings in order to get themselves in the, in the stacking lanes. And if, and if there are cars stacked all the way back, this car comes in and they don't want to get gas, where do they go? How do they then arrange themselves to get themselves in the drive-through? You see what I'm saying? I don't know if somebody can make that tight radius of a right turn when they're coming in off-Center Street if they're not getting gas, if they're only coming through the drive-through, I don't know, get a gallon of milk or whatever.
Without crossing the lined island.
Without crossing the lined item. Right. I think it's a glitch.
That is something that we can take a look at in our further design analysis, looking at the flow.
Okay, and then, and then the right turn off of your entryway coming in, the private drive, I understand it, but there's going to be people that get gas and no one's coming in, and they're going to go straight out the wrong way so that they don't have to drive all the way around to get back in the northbound lane of the private drive to then come back around to the east-west lane to head up towards the signal toward center. I mean, I can see that happening all the time.
So this is Pat Avolia with Giant Eagle. I can maybe, since Chuck wasn't around for the original design and the, the right-in entrance off of center, I can maybe speak a little bit to that. One of the key things that we did with this redesign and this re-submittals, we reduced the overall number of pumps. We moved the canopy further away from Center Avenue itself and created more of a north-south realignment. And that flowing movement coming in, when you look at this plan here compared to the other one.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for the clerk? We've, it's not as easy when.
Pat Avolia with Giant Eagle Inc.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. But we can then provide the, show the, the vehicle turning movements to indicate, you know, and address some of those concerns. And we can also look at that right-in. I think that we had a little bit more definition on the prior version for the, the truck entry, you know, coming into the to drop fuel, and we can provide those analyses in detail, this, this go-around as well to help address that at the, you know, at the further site plan review timeframe.
Because I remember us having an issue with the right end off-center before, but now there's a now there's a whole drive-through issue here now that's, you know, it's, it adds a whole nother issue to it. So if you just take a look at that. So if you just take a look at that.
No, we'll look at that, but we think that the, you know, we've, I think, provided 19, I think, 1920, you know, stacking stalls, I guess, from where the the window is from a drive-through perspective, which is much more than what's required in the ordinance. And part of that is we're we're not exactly certain how this is going to function, we're going to provide for an abundance of that.
Okay.
You know, in order to preclude those types of issues or problems with those long queue lines.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And one of the other things is, we also have, you know, on the left side of, you know, on the, basically you would enter opposite to Giant Eagle, we have five spaces for curbside pickup, which if there is any length of queue or a delay in the order being fulfilled, they could pull there. And I also believe that we are evaluating technology to be able to order at the dispensers and also through a mobile, and we are able to order currently through a mobile application as well. So, you know, we feel that the the number of stacking spaces overall, you know, shouldn't have an issue with it queuing backwards and up that. And I also believe that's one of the reasons for the the condition for further evaluation. In the event there is an issue, we have to address that as part of the conditional use permit that the administration recommended. So we understand it and, you know, your concerns, and we want to try to mitigate them and address them as best as we can. And we think that we can show these a little bit further, provide the additional detail or anything that you request.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Yeah, you have a drawing TR-1, which shows the turning radiuses of the trucks and the vehicles. If you could submit maybe the next time, how how someone would get in and turn into the queuing lane from that Center Street lane? Or how someone coming in on the southern entrance? How they get to the queuing lane? You don't want people driving through the gas pumps to get there. It just, I'm just looking for maybe a little more clarification as about how how the site, the vehicle flow, especially for the drive-through, how you get to the drive-through from the southern entrance and from the eastern entrance, especially considering radiuses.
We can provide that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hadden.
I have some concerns regarding people walking into your store. Right now you have like three spots or out front there, which is the south side, I guess, that people can park and enter your store. And then you have that bank of parked tent spots along Center Street there. My concern is that pedestrians trying to cross that traffic to get into your store. That no matter which, where they park, almost everyone's got to cross traffic to get into your store. I encourage you to work with the, and work with the administration on maybe fixing it somehow.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. For your proposed propane cage area, I know that's for the future. My concerns are that they're very close to traffic and pedestrians. And I think in our regulations, they say they shouldn't be away from high-traffic areas, and that to me is a high-traffic area. So maybe take a look at that and find a better spot for that. I do have another question. I'll just keep going. For the deliveries, I know in that one turning, the TR-1, you show a truck coming in from Center Street for deliveries, but where did it go from there?
Good question.
I don't know. I guess he's going to park on the, I don't know, I don't know how he's going to get product into your store. Something to look at.
Something more to look at.
I do have one more item.
Mr. Hadden.
On the east side of your retail store, you show a lawn area. Is there, is there plans to have seating there in the future or tables or?
Is Pat unmuted?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm still sorry, I was muted, I'm here now. That area to the east, that is an area reserving for future expansion.
Thank you.
Seems like you got a lot to think about here. Is there anything else from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. One question or just actually a comment on the architecturals once again. I guess in general, I agree with the city that we need more masonry. And if you really take a look at the plan overview that shows the parking and everything, that rear area that is sort of what they call the metal panel screening, it really, if you look at the actual linear feet of that, it takes up half of the building. So I definitely think that that needs to be addressed as well, some sort of material that seems a little bit more in keeping with the main building itself rather than looked like fenced-in area. And that material especially if at some point there's a area for customers and so forth. I mean, that's not the strongest stuff in the world, but I think that it takes up 50% of the building. So that really needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Ms. Mitchell.
Oh, you had some.
Just one comment, and I know we're not doing architectural and we don't do signs. But when you come back, I would like to see less words and signage around this building. I'd be surprised if this meets code, but it just doesn't look right either.
I would just ask for the record if we could clarify the conditions. I know there were two definite items that were recommended to be added to Mr. Varga's point. The mechanical equipment, shoved screen from off-site views in accordance with Section 116206A. That wasn't a condition. We normally add that, and so that should be added. And also, it sounds like the recommendation to provide turning movement examples from the south and eastern entrances to get to the drive-through lanes.
Yeah, including the service truck.
And I know Mr. Hadden indicated that he wanted the applicant to consider the relocation of the propane tanks. That could be added to Item 6, because it's already addressed, the propane area. Consider relocation of tanks, something to look at. I didn't know if Mr. Hadden wanted to add any others as condition.
No, it's just the pedestrians getting to the store. I don't know if that's some sort of condition, just to look at that pedestrian flow, make sure they can enter their building safely.
This is a preliminary review, we're not going to vote on it.
Yep, vote.
Mr. Chairman. I guess one of the things I just, you know, asked the commission members to consider before approving a preliminary is the number of additional questions that you've raised tonight and whether or not the conditions necessarily, you know, whether those issues can can really be cured or addressed, you know, adequately. If you approve a preliminary tonight, or whether or not it would be more appropriate to table it. Ostensibly, the final is being substantial agreement, preliminary, notwithstanding some of the conditions where specific changes would be called out. So, again, so commission's discretion, of course, just wanted to point that out.
I don't have a problem with tabling it to have all these questions answered and some documentation produced.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Purgovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Miscellaneous review of an outdoor storage area at 9010 Tyler Boulevard. That applicant's here, please state your name and address.
Timothy Posar from Tyler 9010 LLC.
Will you tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
Yeah, we're looking, we've had a problem with theft at the building, and our tenants have requested some outside storage. And we have the acreage behind the building, so we thought that would be a great area to do some secure storage for them and the building owners. And right now, if you look at the property, it already has the storm sewers in it. We understand some of the comments here, and I'd be happy to go through each of them with some maybe alternatives to make it work for for the city and also for the building owners. Again, this this lot here, I mean, it's, it's more valuable as a building lot, and but we want to take care of our tenants there. And if you drive by the building on any given day, you'll see trailers out in the parking lot. It's just really unsightly. So we thought by pushing it back here within the fenced area, landscape with the trees, it will definitely screen it and make it more secure for the tenants.
Thank you. Is there anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, we've certainly noted the conditions that actually are required per the code. Or the surfacing of the outdoor storage area shall be improved, and the screening needs to comply with the code sections referenced, 116104.
Thank you. Is there anything from the commissioners?
I have a question to the applicant. Excuse me. You're aware of the condition, which is a code condition, that whatever you store there has to be one foot below the the level of the enclosure fence. What kind of things, what kind of things might you be storing there?
You see the trailers in those photos that they had there? Trailers, trucks, you know. And we were going to do the eight-foot fence in, we see the requirement on either a masonry or a vinyl fence, but we were going to propose the eight-foot black chain or green chain link fence, and then you put the slots in it where you can't see in it to help shield it even more, in addition to the plantings that we were doing around it.
Well, my, and I understand that. My my concern is that, and as we had the photo of that trailer, that trailer is probably approaching seven foot or taller to the top. Like, for instance, if you would be putting somewhat, I don't know if this would happen, someone has a boat on a trailer that they might want to store back there. That's going to be more than seven foot tall. So my concern here is that you understand that based on the size of the fence limits the height of the things you can store back there.
Correct, correct. We didn't want to store large items. Again, it was more of a convenience and security for our tenants to keep their stuff under lock and key.
It's good, as long as there's something one seven feet tall on an eight-foot fence.
No, we realize that. And if we see that we're going to have an issue, then we might have to come back and ask for something taller. But right now, we feel that would be the ample height that'll fit all the criteria that our tenants are requesting.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cicero.
A question for the applicant regarding condition number three. As I understand, the current surface area is gravel, and you understand you need to change, improve that to a concrete or a masonry or something that's an improved surface, asphalt?
We'd like to propose using asphalt grindings instead of the gravel, which would make it a, we feel a much better surface. But we didn't want to go to the expense because, again, we were trying to tailor to the needs of our tenants. But, you know, honestly, this lot is more valuable for future development. We didn't want to go to that extent at this period of time.
I do understand that, but there's still the code that we're held to enforce. And I think we've just rattled off three items that would vary from our existing code. So I get a little uncomfortable as we continue to do that.
Okay.
Is there anything else from the commissioners? I'm on board with Mr. Cicero. There's almost no part of this that meets the code. And we have a code for a reason. And, you know, it's one thing to bend on one thing, but like Mr. Cicero said, it's many things, and we start to set a precedent here. So that's where I stand.
All right, well, can I ask if we could table it at the present time? And I will sit down with the the partners and discuss the different options that, you know, the concerns that you folks have, and then get back with the administration and possibly bring it up in the future.
Okay, motion to, motion to table.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Purgovich.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Hadden.
Yes.
Yes. Miscellaneous, oh, thank you. Miscellaneous review to transfer a conditional use permit at 8710 Twin Brook, Twin Brook Road. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
Yes, my name is Dale Markowitz. I'm here on behalf of Frankie and Dillons, Inc. And also with me is Greg Talon and Max Dunn on behalf of True to Form Collision Centers, Inc. My client Frankie and Dillons has sold their collision business to True to Form, which is part of the Gerber Boyd Group that has a number of collision centers all over the United States and Canada. We have submitted for a transfer of a conditional use permit as required by your code. And we submitted an application, got the staff report back, and since then, we have resolved all the issues that were raised in the staff report, which I can go over with you. As you see up on the screen, that was from our, our old plan from when our permit was issued. It required 25 parking spaces. We actually have significantly more than that. Since that time, there was a comment that we should add some handicap parking. So we presented a new parking plan, which we gave to Larry the other day, which shows the first two spaces closest to the building. The ones that would be closest to the road and to the building, those would become handicap. So we would have 25 spaces along that road, and then we have seven spaces more in the back. More could be added along the side of the building to park, parallel to the building if needed. But we haven't had a need for that. We have, in the staff report, there was comments regarding waste and other scrap materials and motor vehicles that were primarily in the back. Most all of that had been as a result of my client selling the business and moving his stuff out of the building and temporarily putting it in the back. And over the course of the last two weeks, ending as of yesterday, everything's been moved out of there that we had, we had tires, we had some automobiles, trailers. We had 250-gallon containers of vegetable oil. And I sent Larry pictures over the course of the last few days where all of those items were removed. And so there's nothing left in the building, or I'm sorry, outside the building. There are no vehicles under repair that are left outside. There's over 40 spaces available inside the building, so they don't have a need for outside parking. And what you see in that aerial, which is, you know, not a current picture, but relatively current, those are employees parking for the most part. Now, those pictures, if you look at the, on the left, the white container, which is in capsulizer, those are vegetable oil containers that have been removed. And you can see the trailer getting ready to take those out yesterday. And as you can see, the only thing that's back there, somebody parked their car on CEI's. their car on CEI's property there who was involved in removing everything. Way, way in the back, there's a pink truck. That is not on our property. That belongs to the Marine League, who's the property owner to the east of us. So, the site has, is in compliance with the code requirements and the conditional use permit. We, there was a question asked about shared parking with the Marine League. And for a number of years, there was shared parking. And a while ago, my client ended that arrangement because we didn't need that parking. And the Marine League is apparently doing fine on their own without using our parking. They would normally use it on the weekends when they would have their members come there for various spectrum events. But they haven't made a request for parking permits, and we don't need parking from them. So, we are in compliance with your code. We have, I know there's a need for True to Form to make an application for a certificate of occupancy, which they're prepared to do once the transfer of the conditional use permit is granted.
Thank you. Is there anything from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that Mr. Markowitz has addressed all of our concerns raised, from the outside storage to the shared parking agreement, which no longer seems to be an issue. And if you can see from the aerial photo shown, the property to the east is the Marine Corp. League. There's really no place to share parking. There's no designated spaces outlined, so it wouldn't even be appropriate at the time. So, we didn't, we didn't extend that condition with this transfer.
Thank you. Anything from the commissioners?
There's two big blue dumpsters. Those are going away. Those are just in the interim there. In one of the photos, they show two, yeah, two large blue dumpsters.
Yeah, those, I believe that those are being used right now by True to Form for the transformation that's going between the two businesses. Max Dunn, who's here on behalf of True to Form, could speak to that.
Hello, yes, this is Max Dunn. We are using those dumpsters during the transition, but those would be removed and then replaced with smaller trash containers that we would use for our business operations.
And then we have a requirement that those permanent trash containers need to be enclosed.
Okay. I'm sure we can accommodate.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the commissioner? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So, I'll make a motion, but I think we now have seven conditions with the enclosure of the permanent trash containers.
That's actually, that's number three.
I guess it does say. Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pergovich? Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Okay, preliminary site plan of a vehicle service facility, Jiffy Lube at 9595 Diamond Center Drive. An applicant's still here. Please tell us a little bit about your Jiffy Lube.
Yes. Again, Matthew Pisco, 37704, Hill Tech Department, Hills, Michigan. Developing within a parcel between the Dairy Queen and the old people utilizing curbscapes off of Diamond Center Drive. We circulate and enter the back of the building from the north side and exit out the south side. We have a circularator on the site, so customers can really, and how they prefer. There's enough for them to safely do that. As far as the traffic goes, in 70 cars a day, this is a very low volume traffic generated, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And it essentially goes dark at that point in time. So, for some of the photometric issues wouldn't be an issue, and we'll comply with the photometric requirements. And Mr. Hadden spoke about the screening on the east. We will definitely screen that with the commission, and we can certainly comply with the preliminary site plan conditions enumerated.
Thank you. Anything from the administration?
Nothing for editor.
Anything from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Comment about the architecturals. I'm not, I didn't see anything from the administration on the amount of EFS on the structure, but I think that there's quite a bit of it. It really doesn't look like an accent any longer. It's starting to become the predominant material. So, I just wanted to kind of comment on that, possibly have them look into maybe something that's a little bit more trending now, which is like the horizontal siding, cement siding that might take on a different look, whether it's wood tone or not. But just get some thoughts on that. Thank you, thank you.
Anything else from the commissioners?
I'd like to see a color render. Well, Chris, we have it there. We didn't see the package, no.
Through the chair, this is the applicant, Matthew Pisco. Are you referring to something like Nietzsche Ha, vertically oriented for, in place of the EFS?
Yeah, yes. Whether it's an accent or not, just an addition too. But it seems that, like I said, when you look at the rendering especially, there's quite a bit of EFS on there. But there's some of the new material that tends to even take a wood tone look that just brings another warm tone into it.
Okay. And there's, we always go back and forth whether, whether we go to the top of the bay doors with the brick or not, or match the vestibule soldier course. That's something we can certainly do. That reduces the mass of the EFS. And again, to Commissioner Hayden, we will screen on the east elevation. That hit me before, like a sledgehammer when he said it. I looked at the drawing, I'm like, clearly that needs to be screened. The parapet covers around the roof mounted equipment.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, yeah, that was a possibility, and you went, you went right to that spot, which is to raise the brick up to the top of the doors.
Yep.
The large doors, that's a way of reducing the amount of the alternate material to brick. And that, the city doesn't have a problem with this thin brick up application, do they? No. So, that material is fine. But I might suggest raising it up to the top of the doors, or that, that soldier course becomes the header over the door, or something like that.
Through the chair? I would say that's an easy fix.
And then an alternate material to EFS.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. A question for the applicant regarding the dumpster. Is there, is there oil barrels stored out there? Is that those two circles?
They may be filters. The basement, I'll give you a little, the basement actually has no four drains, and that's where the used oil and the new oil and all the fluids are stored, just spill prevention and containment. Is there, those are, we can legally store them afterwards, and those are picked up during regular business. But they're, they're in the bag.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? So, you've read the staff report, and you're okay with the preliminary site plan conditions?
All seven of them, absolutely, plus the eighth, the EFS and the soldier course and brick.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve of the eight stipulations or conditions.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Pergovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, is there anything from administration?
Nothing for the commission tonight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.